So we can approve the rest of these if there are any other... Okay, it's being recorded. Um, I just, I want to put it out there that, um, a few people have reached out to me and said that they can't hear the audio from this meeting that are trying to tune into the K-Baz YouTube channel, so I just want to make sure that that's known. But that was, that was my only question applied to all three of these agreements, so I'm, I'm fine to go ahead and approve all of them under that understanding.
Mrs., uh, Hacker?
There, we have a full audio, we have a full audio recording going on that'll be posted. We're having some technical difficulties with the live feed, so continue.
Okay, we will. Um, yes, Mrs. Marcus, you had a question?
Uh, I also asked about those three, um, items and got the answer that I would have accepted if that is why I did not ask it to be, uh, not included. So I asked that question also, but I did get an answer.
Okay, fair enough.
Um, Mrs. Hacker, this is Noah. Can we amend the motion? Whoever made the motion amended to include all three items so we can take one vote?
I will second the amendment. Mrs. Marcus?
Okay, well, let me, let me make the motion. I move approval of the consent calendar with no items pulled.
No, no, what you have to do is take Item C and add D and E to it. Amend that motion that Mrs. Marcus made.
Got it.
Mrs. Marcus made the motion, she has to do it.
I would like to amend the motion to include Items D and E also. Now you need a second.
Mrs. Hacker, you seconded that, right?
Who's got the second? Okay, so who's gone to second that motion?
I think Mrs. Hacker did.
Yeah, she did.
So, Mrs. Hacker, do you accept the amendment of the second, of the motion?
Yes, I do. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't do that right. Okay, Noah, is that a yes or no?
Yeah, aye.
Aye, okay, Mr. Spitz?
Aye.
Okay, Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Aye.
Okay, and Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I am, I also agree. So that's five zero, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda by, pulled by Mrs. Walker Schuman, Item D on the consent calendar. Do I please have a motion for discussion?
We just included that in the motion.
You know what? I apologize, I muted. That was D. Did you already, oh, you did D and E. You're right.
Yeah, we included, we included D and E in this case.
Yes, 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 you're absolutely right. Okay, so moving on to reports from Dr. Bregy. Dr. Bregy? Okay, Noah, are you still there with me?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so is Dr. Bregy not with us? Can someone tell him he's not with us?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, is Carrie, can Carrie hear us?
Carrie, is Carrie on right now?
You mean Romeo?
Yeah.
I think Ro, you mean Romeo.
Romeo Carey, right. Is he not hearing us? Cause he's there live with Dr. Bregy.
No, I'm here, go right ahead.
Oh, you are? Okay, we can hear Dr. Bregy.
Can you hear me? Dr. Bregy may have muted his phone.
Okay, Dr. Bregy, you're on with your superintendent's report, please. Okay, Dr. Bregy's not responding.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes. Okay, I just, I know I totally know what Mrs. Marcus was talking about because I kept pressing star six and, um, it just wasn't doing anything. So, but I'm glad I'm back on, so, um, thank you for giving me a moment to give my report. Um, I want to start off by congratulating our entire community, uh, for coping with an extremely difficult time in all of our lives, uh, personally, and also just this change in learning that's happening in our community. Um, we are fully embracing our district motto, uh, we've said it before, but we're truly living it. The education reimagined, um, that we've talked about so much, and I'm just so proud to lead such an incredible team and work with such a, a great community. Uh, I do understand that there are some concerns in the community about our home learning plan, and I just want to take the opportunity to address some of the concerns, uh, in my update this evening. Uh, my own concern after hearing some of the reports and the public comment, uh, although open to, um, all the feedback, is that, that many of the concerns were coming before we even started our home learning. Uh, and as a reminder, today is the very first day of home learning, and we have every understanding that it's going to change and grow and adapt with the feedback that we are receiving, and we are finding that feedback to be very valuable. The decision to close our school district was made and communicated to families on the evening of Thursday, March 12th at eight o'clock, uh, PM, and at this time, students and staff had already been dismissed for a well-deserved spring break. Um, the administration, uh, upon my direction forgave their spring break plan to instantly create a home learning plan to address our district's physical shutdown for at least, uh, ten days, which is March 23rd to April 6th. And as we began to receive more information and we thought that it was likely that we'd be physically shut down for a longer period, we have already begun discussions and we will use the feedback that we're getting in the future, uh, to look at what this second phase is for home learning, um, uh, later during this week. Uh, many parents are asking, why does this need to be a slow rollout? And frankly, it's really not a slow rollout. Many districts are providing the bare bones of education. However, we must walk before we run, um, and to be completely transparent, this pandemic is a true test for our school district as we're being pushed faster than we are ready. Um, we did blindside our teachers with this news, and we virtually gave no notice, and we cannot expect for staff to be working during spring break, and have received several emails from parents that were upset that nothing was done or communicated within the last ten days, and this is very disappointing because I can understand that for the administrators to work, and they did, but for the rest of the staff, that was a well-deserved time off, and, and I can't make that expectation of them, although I have a feeling so many of them were working and preparing for this week already. Um, our work has actually been adopted by other school districts, so the work that we're putting out is being used by other school districts, and I just want people to know that, uh, our communication and our plan is being well-received, and even the Association of California Administrators, ACTA, is, uh, they shared on a state level, uh, our information about our quality resources. So, we're definitely in a position that we're off to a good start, but there's improvements that need to be made as we move forward. Uh, with a longer physical shutdown, as I said, we're already collaborating, uh, to create more structure and support, uh, for our students. I'm also hearing about our school district that must step up like other school districts, and we have incredible collaborative relationships with other school districts, and we're actually leading the way in our communication. Um, people are claiming that other school districts, uh, K-12, um, have replaced their entire instruction time, five days a week, in a school setting to a video setting, from a classroom setting to a video setting, and people are saying that every minute is online, and it, I'd really like to know more about that. Like I said, we have a good relationship with other school districts, but if, if that is happening, please let me know what that school district is so that we can reach out and find out, um, what others are doing, because this is a shared experience with school districts all over Southern California. Um, the shift from classroom teaching to remote home learning, um, is, is happening quickly, and it'll begin to change quickly, um, but I just want to remind people too that having a camera on your laptop computer doesn't immediately change a classroom lesson to an online lesson, and as a former teacher, I can tell you it just doesn't work like that. Another reason for the rollout that we have is to give our students and parents opportunities to learn about the expectations for video conferencing, and this is another reason why it's where we have to walk before we run. I'm already getting reports from some teachers about students that are being disrespectful on some of the video chats, um, and making some bad decisions, playing loud music, swearing, and in addition, I've also been aware of parents and students taking videos and photos of the conferencing and posting them into social media. So we will be sending out very clear expectations sometime tomorrow so that everybody understands what the expectations are, and this is why, again, this is uncharted territory. People didn't think that we would have to start making some policy decisions around, uh, uh, this type of behavior, but we clearly do, and we want to be able to support everybody in the learning environment and not have to remove people from the video access because of poor choices. Um, couple updates just about testing. The college board, which administers the, the SAT, they've canceled on March 28th, uh, the makeup and the May 2nd test date. Um, the next SAT date will be June 6th with a registration deadline of the 27th. The college board is also working on remote learning for AP students who are, uh, have testing, uh, coming up. The situation's changing frequently, uh, but there's going to be new opportunities for testing for our AP students. The April 4th ACT test date has been rescheduled to June 13th, and the state test, testing in math and English, language arts for grades three through eight and 11 have been canceled for the school, uh, the current school year and will not take place. So, we do ask the question, what does success mean to us during this pandemic as a school district? And have yet to meet a teacher that wants to let down one of our students. Success means that our staff enables our students to continue their education during this unpredictable time, and we understand our priority to educate our students, but we also have the responsibility to protect ourselves. We are a work in progress. There's been an issue, there has never been an issue of willingness or ability to conduct our home learning. Um, we're still waiting for regulatory concerns from the state and federal guidance. We haven't really received this information, these are kind of hurdles in front of us, but we've decided to go ahead and we're providing more than just enrichment and retention material for our students, and so you will see changes to come in the near future. And I just implore everyone to, to please don't forget the basic humanity in this time, and just like you, many of our teachers at home, uh, they're teaching their own children while being a teacher to your children, and we will continue to bring us the very best and to, to our students. But please remember, a small word of encouragement goes a long way, and that goes for our entire staff, not just our teachers. So I want to thank everybody for your patience, uh, your support, your flexibility. At the end of the day, please remember that, um, you're just not watching over your children in a normal time, uh, your children's behavior, uh, is different, um, all of it, all of our kids right now. I mean, it's, we're, we're all living a different kind of life, so, um, I think everybody's doing a great job, um, and it's going to be okay, and improvements will happen as long as we continue to work together. Uh, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Recupero, uh, any questions?
Uh, Isabel?
Yes, Mel?
Isabel, this is, this is Mel. I'd like, I'd like to just add one, uh, uh, one response to, uh, Dr. Bregy.
Yes, that's fine, Mel. What I'd like to do, if it's okay with, I'd like to just go around, you know, with Mr., start with, uh, Board Member Recupero and then Mr. Margot, and then work my way around.
Okay, fine, okay, fine.
Okay?
I see.
So is Mr. Recupero with us?
Uh, yes.
Is Mr. Recupero with us?
Yes.
Okay, hi, do you have any comments or questions for Dr. Bregy?
Um, no, I, I just have one, uh, quick comment, uh, about the communication. I mean, it's been, you know, the communication from Dr. Bregy and Ms. Starkins has been amazing, I mean, to say the least. Uh, it's before I could even think of asking a question and the email was already sent, so I just do really appreciate, um, that communication, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Thomas, for that. Um, Mr. Margot?
Uh, thank you, um, Mrs. Hacker. Dr. Bregy, thank you for your report. Um, there's a lot to digest, and I hope the community, um, eventually hears what you have to say. There is a tinge of humanity that has to be considered along with everything the district is trying to accomplish. Um, I myself, um, have two children that are dealing with this online learning and trying to pick it up from day one, and I think instead of looking at it as, um, you know, what, what's wrong, I look at it as an opportunity of what we can do better. So I, I am in constant contact with my children during their day about their schedule, about what work is to be done, and I, and I would like to encourage parents to do the same. If parents knew that, uh, the, sorry, if our students knew that their parents were involved, um, in their learning a little closer now, um, uh, hopefully they would give it, uh, the kind of attention, all of them, parent, all the stakeholders would give it the attention that it always deserves, so that when this crisis is over and we go back to, uh, regular classroom learning, we would have created a relationship between parents, students, and teachers that strengthens our student success. So I'll just say that for now, and I'll time in later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Margot, for that. Uh, Mr. Spitz?
Yes, uh, Dr. Bregy, uh, this is just a small word of support from a board member, okay? That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Walker Schuman, thank you.
Um, I agree with all of the colleagues, all of my colleagues, my virtual right. Um, I think that there has been a huge amount of effort by our teachers and our faculty and our staff, our, our cabinet and admins, um, to try and hustle and get something together that represents, um, online learning in a very short timeframe in a, in a crisis situation. So I want to thank all of them and, um, and Ms. Starkins and Dr. Bregy for their constant communication. Uh, you know, this is a situation that nobody really foresees and prepares for, so we can only really be judged on how it is that we manage it, um, you know, as we go through it each day, so I just am going to encourage everyone to continue not only advocating for their kids, because we appreciate that, but also, you know, be patient with us because we're all growing through this. There is no, um, you know, template that we have to follow for how to roll out a program like this in a short period of time during a crisis. So I just, I thank everyone for being patient, for rolling with us, for growing with us, um, and, and our students, most of all, because they're the, really the ones on the front line, um, trying to adapt. So, so thank, thank you all, and, and let's, you know, continue the village effort that it takes to make this kind of change.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus?
Can you hear, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay, well, first of all, you know, I do not have choice in the school district, but I am very concerned about education that the kids that are there now are going to be getting during the next few weeks. I'm very much wish to be able to see it. Uh, I, I don't have that capability at home, but I would love to see what they are getting because I am very interested, and I'm hoping to make that arrangement with, uh, Dr. Bregy if that's going to be a possibility. I would love to see it. I know three of the members of the board can see it, but Mr. Spitz and I cannot. So I'm hoping to be made arrangement. I would love to see some of the things that are going on and some of the things that the teachers are doing. I, I just want to make one little, one little comment, and that is, you don't learn to play the concerto by sitting down at the piano the first time you do it. Time, and this is something that we're going to have to learn, that we're going to be moving along in uncharted territories, and we're going to improve this as we go along, and it's going to get better. So just give it some time, and the teachers are working as hard as they can, and the administration is, and it's going to get better, I promise you. So, uh, please bear with us and just going forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. What I would say to everyone is today is day one, and we've never done this before, and so much like anything that we do for the first time, it's, it's rarely ever exactly what we envision it to do, and I think everyone's best, uh, effort and intent is obvious to me, and I think that this is an opportunity for us to really grow together and learn together, and, you know, I'm not saying that the board is, I, I'm going to speak for the board, I don't think the board is defensive about any of the comments that we made, that were made today in public. I don't think we're ignoring any of those comments, but I would ask for everyone to please be a little patient with us. This is, you know, there's nothing more important to the five of us than the instruction of our children in this district. Uh, we take that very serious, and I know that Dr. Bregy takes it very serious as well as, as do our teachers, and so everyone's trying here, and please be patient, it's the first day. Our teachers just came back from break as we did, and so, you know, we're dealing with unprecedented times that were never imagined or really even planned for. So, I'm really asking for everyone to be a little bit flexible with us in the, in these first few days of, of just getting back into the swing of things, and I'm not going to elaborate anymore, I'm going to move forward with our meeting. Dr. Bregy or anyone else in your cabinet, do they have anything else to add? Dustin? This is Sizem.
No, I, I feel all the thoughts that you guys have all mentioned, and I thank you guys all for the support as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Ditto, I agree, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to board member, student board member report. Mr. Recupero?
All right, thank you. I saved a lot of my comments from my report instead of responding right to Dr. Bregy, but, um, it's been a very difficult and interesting last 12 days, to say the least. Everybody's lifestyles have taken a turn, um, all industries throughout the world, really, um, and education is the one that we're involved in, so that's taken a big turn. Uh, no one can plan for a pandemic like this one, but I, but everyone from Dr. Bregy to the administration, teachers, even the custodial staff and others, the board members are on board, um, in ensuring students' health and safety and delivering a curriculum. Uh, we are lucky and thankful for all the work being done in the district as well as within the city. However, I do understand how it can be a difficult time for students as well. In fact, a lot of students, including myself, um, miss going to school and just the daily routine, routine of things, um, that we are all so used to, um, but we're not going to sacrifice a student's health for that, and I understand that. Um, today was the first day of home learning. I already had two sessions, one of which was at 7:00 AM, so I got right back into the routine of things pretty quickly, um, but nonetheless, it was pretty successful for day one. Um, all my teachers have contacted me, and this home learning is by no means a one-size-fits-all for the teachers in delivering a curriculum. Every teacher is doing something slightly different, um, and this is only day one, so I ask that everyone is patient, uh, with the, with the delivery of the curriculum. Um, almost all AP students have finished the curriculum that is to be covered on the new modified AP exam, but, um, for all other students in the district is going to be a work in progress and will be revamped, uh, with feedback, um, because the duration of the home learning will probably be extended and will be extended. Um, I'm hoping to have more feedback at the next board meeting on my personal experiences and others that I, uh, talk to, um, but just please be patient because, uh, teachers and students and everyone is still figuring out what works best, uh, and that's it.
Okay, we are moving to planning and facilities. Thank you for that, Mr. Recupero, and moving on to planning and facilities. May I please have a motion to authorize for, uh, item? Mr. Margot?
Excuse me, Mrs. Hacker, we have business and finance, there's an issue, if I can make a motion on that one.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, did I skip that? Thank you, Mr. Um, Margot. Okay, approval of, may I make a motion to approve the award of bid number 1920 PUR 006 for network infrastructure equipment? May I have a second?
I'll second. I will second.
Someone did it, I'm not sure. Who?
Tristan.
I, I'm sorry, I did, I don't know who.
I did.
Okay, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Okay, thank you for that. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Margot, are you in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm in favor as well, that's five zero. Moving on to facilities, I make a motion to au-
I will move, I, I-
I will move it, Mrs. Marcus. I'm just going to move it because it's so much, go ahead, Mrs. Marcus.
You want, oh, you just want to move it? Oh. Authorization to purchase change structure for Beverly Vista Middle School from USA shade and fabric structures by utilizing Fullerton Joint Union High School District, bid number 18197, district-wide shade structures, piggyback contract.
And Noah seconded.
Uh, I asked a question about this one, uh, and, um, the one thing that I was told, and this was within the one with the Horace Mann, is why we didn't do it jointly because they were both going for shade, but I was told that because of the configuration of, uh, and the structure that were needed, these companies, uh, were perfectly suited to both schools. So, um, I just wanted to share that. I did question that, at the, why it couldn't have been, go for both of them at the same time, but because there were different types of structures in each company, especially in their own type of structure, these were best suited to these two facilities. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you for that. Uh, anybody else? Okay, let's call for the questions. Mr. Margot, are you in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well, that's five zero. It passes, five zero, moving on. May I please, I'll make the motion if it, if everyone's okay with that. I move for the approval of change order number one to Horace Mann Building A, re-roof project, bid number 100-18/19 project. Um, do I have a second, please?
I'll second, it's Mel.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Okay, discussion, please. I actually did have a question about this. Does anyone have a question before I go?
I did ask a question on this one, and I questioned the fact that this is amendment number one, which was made on March 14th, or March 16th, and here it is March 24th, and the work is already done, so I was wondering how it was that they did all this work in seven or eight days? Because we were just asked to approve the, um, the seventy-five or seventy-eight thousand dollars days ago. All right, well, that was first, uh, uh, it was the approval for the, uh, extra money. So, uh, evidently this was known all along according to the superintendent, and they had been monitoring it, and it was only that it's now being finished that we have asked to approve the, uh, change order.
Yes, and, and so what I would say to that, or just add to that, is initially when I sent my questions in ahead of time, for some reason, when I think I made the transfer from my computer over to the district's, um, uh, you know, the email for the district, that sentence got dropped from my email, so this is the question that I had asked earlier about Dr. Bregy that I said I didn't receive answer to, but I see why. My computer dropped that email, that sentence by mistake, but my question was, when did, when did we learn about this change order? That was my question.
And I believe that Mr. Pileman is on the line who can answer that as well.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Did you hear my question, Jeff, and Mrs. Marcus's?
Yes, this is Jeff Pileman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Yeah.
So, during the summer, um, approximately late June, we discovered some anomalies with the existing roof structure once the roof, clay tile roofing on Horace Mann Building A was removed. As we proceeded to demo even more, um, up against the high plaster walls and into the mechanical wells, we found more dry rot, more damage to both the roof structure as well as plaster walls. So, the, the areas that were identified were reported back to facilities committee progressively. Due to the schedule on that project, contractor was directed to proceed on a time of material to repair the required damage and resume with the installation of the new clay tile in an attempt to beat the opening of school on August 10th. The work subsequently ran past August 10th due to the severity of the conditions identified. The contractor did not summarize all of the costs involved and submit them to us until late December, early January 2020, of which time we went through and did an audit with the architect and inspector and facility staff, and negotiated the final price to recommend for approval. That is why tonight you're seeing both the change order one, which is a settlement to close out the contract, as well as an upcoming board agenda item for the notice of completion to close out that contract.
Uh, my question-
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mrs. Marcus.
Were we told at the time that this had happened and that we could expect it to cost more- Were we told at the time that this had happened and that we could expect it to cost more money? When they found all this damage that had to be repaired? I, I mean, I'm just curious if they had an idea at that time that this was going to happen?
Yes, Ms. Marcus, we had, um, knowledge that this would incur additional expense. The facilities, um, procedural manual and procurement manual gives the superintendent change order authorization approval for extra work up to 10% of the value of the base contract. It was not assumed that that work was going to exceed that limit, and it did not. Thus, the reporting of the superintendent of what we were experiencing is what we did. Now, I think there's room for process improvement, um, especially on fast-paced critical projects as this. Um, and if it would been projected to be over 10% of the con- base contract amount, that would have been brought forward to the board at that time.
Okay, thank you for your explanation.
Thank you, um, that, that pretty set, pretty much sums it, much satisfies my question. So thank you for being with us tonight, uh, Jeff. Any other questions regarding this issue?
No.
No, okay. So I'm gonna call for the question. Mr. Margot, are you in favor?
Uh, ye- yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm in agreement as well. So that passes five zero. Okay, may I have a motion for the next item, please?
I'll do that. I drew, I moved for the authorization to purchase shade structures for Beverly Vista Middle School from USA Shade and-
No, that's not the one. No, wrong scene, wrong scene.
See, yeah.
We're on the other one.
Except as complete, yeah. Except as, I didn't turn the page. Except as complete the Horace Mann Building A re-roof project, bid number 118/19, and authorize a notice of completion.
I second it, it's Noah.
Okay, Noah, thank you. Mr. Margot, are you in, any discussion, I'm sorry? No? Okay, we're gonna move for the que- for the vote, uh, Mr. Margot?
I vote yes.
Yes or no? Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I agree as well, that's five zero. Okay, approval of the amendment, I make a motion of the approval of the amendment number three to the consultant services agreement with RMA Group for special inspection and/or testing services at Beverly Hills High School, buildings B1 and B2. Do I have a second, please?
Mrs. Marcus second, Mrs. Marcus can second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Okay, any discussion? Okay, Mr. S- Mr. Margot, are you in agreement?
I.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm also in agreement, that's five zero. Okay, moving on to the next item, E, under facilities. Mr. Margot, would you like to make that motion for me, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the authorization to purchase shade structure for Horace Mann School from Dave Bang Associates, uh, by utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Services Contract 030117-LTS.
Thank you for that.
I'll second, this is Tristan.
Okay, Mrs. Walker Schuman, second this. All those in favor? I'm sorry, first discussion. Any discussion on this item? Okay, being that there is none, let's move for the question. Mr. Margot?
I.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm also in agreement, that's five zero. Okay, I make a motion for the award of bid number 19-20-003 to secure communication networks, infrastructure equipment and software. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second it, it's Mel.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, um, I, I, I had asked staff, um, about the, uh, the single bid. Um, we usually, when we have a single bid, we usually reject it and rebid. I wanted to read their response, because I think this is important for our procedural, uh, uh, manual in, in the facility department. So they said that a formal procurement process was conducted in compliance with public, public contract code. Only a limited number of suppliers can provide this equipment and software because of the nature and specialty of the equipment and because there's no labor involved. There were two interested vendors, but only one submitted a bid. The price received was what was expected for the equipment and software involved. The issue of one bid was reviewed by staff and determined that rebidding this procurement package would be futile. Rebidding may not result in improved pricing and could result in higher costs or no bids at all due to the current economic climate and COVID-19 concerns. So thank you, staff, for that answer.
Okay, so since you, any more questions on that? I have a question to respond to Mr. Margot. I have a question for staff. Is Mr. Pileman, who, who's, whose department is this? Is this Mr., is this for secu- uh, facilities, or is this, um?
Mr. Pileman.
Mr. Pileman, okay. So my question is, just, uh, having heard Mr. Margot, uh, explain this to us as far as the bidding, my question is, when did we make a determination that we shouldn't open up rebidding? Being that COVID-19 just happened, like this whole situation around how it impacts districts 11 days ago?
The review of the bidding process and this procurement piece is, was discussed all the way up until agenda due date, which was last Wednesday at 5:00 PM.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you for that, that clarifies it for me. Okay, any other questions from anyone from the board? Okay, I'm gonna call for the question. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I am in agreement as well, that passes five zero. Okay, moving on to communication from board members. Um, Dr. Breggy, uh, we're going to go to graduation speakers. I believe, I heard you said to me that Mr. Margot wanted this on the agenda, is that correct?
So, um, it's come up, actually, it started with the, um, some of the counselors that are putting together the, the programs. So, um, for graduation, and I know that we're in a very unpredictable time right now. Um, but I do think that we need to, um, you know, look at, at, at moving forward in, in things that we can, um, uh, as far as i- it, with graduation. Because there's a lot of planning that, that happens, and so that planning, that piece needs to continue to happen. So, um, and we do this every year where, uh, board members will have a discussion about, um, who would like to speak at, uh, the middle school, high school graduations.
Okay, so, Mr. Margot, did you, do you wanna start off with this, or?
Yes, I, I was, um, thank you, Mrs. Hacker, I was contacted, um, by Beverly Vista asking if I would speak at their graduation, and I said this has to come to the board first. And that's why it went to Dr. Breggy and back, and back to us, that's why it's being discussed tonight.
Okay.
So I, I, and, and just for what it's worth, I would like to speak at BV if there is a graduation, so.
Fall. That's no laughing matter, Mr. Margot.
I wasn't the one laughing.
No, no, hopefully not. Okay, uh, Mr. Spitz?
Well, uh, it's been, it's always been the practice, by the way, uh, of, um, of giving preference to board members who have kids in the graduating class. Uh, and I'm wondering, i- it, does any, do any of our board members have grad- graduating kids from Beverly Vista Middle School?
I believe just Mr. Margot does.
Pardon me?
Yep, I do.
You do?
Yes.
Well, well, uh, let, let me make this comment. Um, here we have, uh, here we have a new school, uh, and, um, normally I would, I would, I would say that the president of the board, uh, should, uh, should have that, uh, assignment. However, um, as I say, it's always been the practice to defer to, uh, to board members who have students. In fact, uh, last year, uh, since, um, Mrs. Uh, Mrs. Uh, uh, Schuman, uh, had, uh, had a daughter at, uh, El Rodeo, and I had a grandson, we shared it. So, uh, in view of that practice, I wanna, I wanna support, uh, Mr. Margot's request.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Walker Schuman?
I'm fine with whatever you guys wanna do. I don't have any graduates this year, so I'm happy to go wherever I'm needed.
Thank you for that. Mrs. Marcus?
Uh, obviously I don't have anybody graduating, uh, since it's not like kids grad- go to school there. And I think that if Mr. Margot has a student that's graduating, I would be in favor of, uh, i- if there was a conflict, um, I would have to make a decision. But since there's no conflict, I, I think that, does the president speak at the high school graduation? Is it customary for the president of the board to speak?
I believe that's been the practice forever.
Okay, so I mean, I, I would have, I wouldn't feel, I, I, as I say, I don't, I don't care, it doesn't matter to me. Um, I, I will, I'll go wherever you want me, that's it.
Thank you. I would agree that we should continue to have continuity in past practice and, you know, congratulations to Mr. Margot on having his daughter graduate, and I think it's a very happy moment for Mr. Margot and his family, and of course for the entire Beverly Vista community. So it totally makes sense, Mr. Margot, for you to, to, to be assigned to Beverly Vista. So I'm, I'm happy that you're, you're happy about that and, and want that, so you can-
Thank you.
Of course. I, I would say that because it is our first graduation, I'm not sure what logistics could be set for this, but I would love for the board to celebrate this first graduating class. And, um, I know that Mr. Spitz and Mr. Margot shared in that really, uh, important vote with me. And, um, but I'd like to extend the, the opportunity to be shared amongst all five board members, because I think it's not three, it's five. So, um, Dr. Breggy, I, I'm not sure what you can do to, maybe we can all attend, and, uh, maybe we can hand out diplomas, I'm not sure. But I would love for all of us to partake in some insignificant form of being involved in that, uh, celebration.
So, I, I appreciate hearing that, and I think that's a really good idea. I'd like to add that, um, you know, to have the, the plaques are coming in any week now, that we could incorporate, um, you know, the plaques going up, um, as, as, you know, part of the structure, um, is, is a pretty exciting event. So in, in some way, it would be nice to incorporate, um, you know, kind of the culminating, you know, student graduation, uh, you know, along with, with, uh, that plaque as well.
Great, great, thank you. So I think that would be great if we could be part of the, of the ceremony. I, as I said, I think the board should attend, it's the first, um, you know, graduation of the kind of, of having a middle school in our district, um, and I think the board should be present. Um, it'd be great if we have, again, some things that, you know, even handing out diplomas or leaving the pledge of allegiance or something, um, for the four of us, uh, would be something to memory, to re- to remember, uh, to remember this day by. It's historical for our district in many ways. Okay, so we will-
Can I just say, Mrs. Hacker, can I, can I just thank my, thank my colleagues for their support on this request, so?
Sure, Noah, of course.
Okay, thank you.
With pleasure, with pleasure. Um, okay, so let's move on to Horace Mann, and the other school in question, of course, is Hawthorne. So, uh, you know, I know this is probably going to be, uh, Mr. Spitz's last year of serving. I would love for him to have one more opportunity to be part of a graduation, or not a graduation, I don't even know. What do you all, I, I should ask Dr. Breggy first, before I get ahead of myself. What are we doing, and do you require anything of the board at these, um, ceremonies for fifth grade at Horace Mann Hawthorne? Because I just realized it's changed, the venue has changed this year.
Right, so we, I mean, we are celebrating, um, at our elementary school, um, you know, that they are, you know, completing their elementary experience there. So, um, that is, I mean, it, there will be a, a ceremony. So it is absolutely appropriate for, um, you know, board members and cabinet, uh, to be in attendance.
Okay, great. So, Mr. Spitz, do you have a preference as to? I mean, I'm not sure if the rest of the board agrees with me, that's my preference. Um, if you guys would like to discuss it, we can start with Mr. Margot. But I, I, I think it would be great to have Mr. Spitz be part of this, uh, one more time.
Yeah, I, I think it would be great. I think, uh, I defer to what Mr. Spitz wants, but absolutely.
Thank you for that, um-
Well, uh, let me say this to you, uh, we, you know, this is the first time for our district that we are having, uh, I, I guess we have to call it a graduation, a graduation of, uh, fifth graders. It's a promotion, and I, I don't really think that it should be, that it, that it needs to be in the same, the same elements, uh, as, uh, as it was, uh, eighth graders.
I agree.
I think it should be, I, I think it should be a different kind of a ceremony. And what I'd like to see is to have staff come up with some suggestions for, uh, the ceremony itself. I think it, I think it's, it can't be the same as eighth grade, when you're dealing with fifth graders. Um, it's a promotion. And so, um, I think, I think we should ask staff to, uh, come up with some guidelines as to, uh, what kind of a ceremony it should be. Uh, and, uh, you know, um, what's gonna be car- what's gonna be carried out, uh?
Sure, I understand what you're saying, Mel. Yeah, and that's why I start, I corrected myself by asking staff, you know, what are you all doing? So, you know, I, I agree with you, it doesn't have to be in the same, uh, delivery that the middle school or the high school will have. But, you know, if there's a, if there's space, Dr. Breggy, for room there for a board member to partake in the events that you all decide, um, we'd appreciate hearing from them, hearing those, and then, of course, being a, you know, being able to assign those to, to board members.
It seems, it seems, uh, one more thing, it's, it seems to me that it could be combined with the, um, with the usual awards ceremonies.
Okay, so we'll leave it to staff to decide.
Yeah.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
I agree with Mr. Spitz, and I, and I agree with, uh, Mr. Margot so far. I, I'm, I'm happy to go wherever the need is. I, I definitely think that it ought to be different, you know, eighth grade or fifth grade promotion, you know? Um, beyond that, I, I leave it to staff feedback to inform the decisions going forward.
Okay, thank you for that. Mrs. Marcus?
Well, I believe if you, uh, or, uh, that I've heard already that the schools, was it Horace Mann and Hawthorne, have committees that are planning some kind of a promotional ceremony for the kids. So, uh, I think that everybody has to be on the same page when they start to plan these, because they may have already started some planning up for the two fifth grade classes that are gonna be leading, uh, the elementary schools. So I, I think if, if, if there is some planning that's gonna be done, you, you need to take into consideration that there are two committees that have been formed at each of the elementary schools that are working on this. As, as far as, uh, the rest of the comments, I agree with them. This is a promotion, I don't think it deserves the great, uh, pooferal that you would get with an eighth grade or with a high school. This is just a promotion, and I think it should be addressed at that level. So, uh, I go along with what everybody else has said.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Recupero, I'm sorry, I skipped you. Do you have anything to add to this discussion?
Um, no, I don't have anything to add. I mean, I agree it should be a promotion. Uh, mine was a promotion, it was actually very quick, about like thirty minutes, so I don't really remember mine, but, uh, yeah, I do agree it should be a promotion.
Yes, I think that has been decided, and, and yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, Dr. Breggy, do you have anything to add? You're gonna circle back to us?
Kind, kind of what we had in mind was, um, as Mrs. Marcus pointed out, there are fully capable hands putting together the, uh, activities, and it is going to be obviously different from, um, uh, with the, uh, eighth grade ceremony and obviously the high school ceremony. Um, one thing that we kind of- and obviously the high school ceremony. Um, one thing that we kind of took in mind was the fact that, um, we would have them staggered so that they wouldn't happen at the same time. So that if, if board members and cabinet wanted to attend, that we wouldn't have to make a decision. That, uh, for the first time in, uh, the district's history is that we're not going to have conflicting dates for these types of promotions or graduations. And so we'll be able to attend, um, all of them. So, uh, we've made room to do that. Um, at this point, the, uh, the way we were looking at it is, is for board members to, um, to attend the promotion ceremony. Um, and that's why they were moved to different times so that any board member that felt like they wanted to attend, uh, would be able to, to do so.
Okay, thank you. So I think we, do you, do you have clear direction from the board, Dr. Bregy, as far as what we're doing? Is, Noah, are you satisfied with the discussion? Or is there more here for discussion? Let me know.
No, I'm very satisfied. Thank you. And, and, um, I'm glad I don't have to speak at the high school this year. Cause my, cause my son is graduating and I, and I don't want to.
Okay. Well, thanks for that, Noah. Okay, um, let's see here. I think you've spoken before though, when it was your other son graduated. Did you not? I think I was aboard, I was on the board when I remember that, I think, right?
I did, I did. And that was, and that was just, uh, it gets to be, um, the president at the time allowed me to speak. But I, I have no particular desire this, this year to do so. So I, it's all, it's all on you. So enjoy.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Isabel, don't you have someone graduating? Or don't you have, uh, Rami graduating?
Yeah.
I do.
Oh, so, there, there you go.
I don't know if that's, um, I, I would understand if my son doesn't want, you know, I mean, they, they're, they should graduate. It's their day, right? We'll just leave it at that. Uh, okay, so we are going to move on to, uh, discussion of CASP scores. Okay, uh, who's starting this?
I, I asked for this to be on the, uh, agenda, so may I, uh, start the discussion?
Absolutely, Mr. Spitz. The floor is yours.
Okay, what I asked for was a board discussion of our eleventh grade CASP score three-year trends. Um, let me start by reminding my colleagues and the staff of a board responsibility according to Board Bylaw nine thousand. It says, "The role of the board is to review and evaluate the educational program on the basis of state and federal accountability measures, disaggregated student achievement data, and other indicators, and ensure that evaluation results are used to improve programs, curricula, and/or instructional practices as necessary to enhance student achievement." Also, it says, "To monitor student achievement and program effectiveness, and require program changes as necessary." So, with that, with that responsibility in mind, I think we would be derelict in our duty if we don't take action as soon as possible to reverse the three-year trends in the CASP score, uh, math and English Language Arts. And I have a recommendation. And that is that a brainstorming study session be scheduled as soon as possible. And of course, this has to do with our ability to get together. Because, uh, I think, I think we need to really be together for this. Uh, but that such a brainstorming study session be scheduled as soon as possible, at which the board will receive input from the math and ELA department heads, the high school principal, the assistant superintendent, and the superintendent as to all of the possible reasons for these negative trends. And also, those reasons that are the most likely. And then given that input, we should be able to develop remedial changes for next school year, the 2021 school year. So that is my recommendation. And what I would like to do now is to ask my colleagues to weigh in on that recommendation or suggest alternatives.
Okay, uh, thank you for that, uh, Mr. Spitz. Um, Mr. Margot, can we start with you? Or, and then we'll work our way back up to me?
Sure, yes. Um, thank you for staff for supplying this data. I am looking at the, uh, the last three years right now. Um, I think Mr. Spitz has a very valid point in the way the numbers are trending. And I think it's something that should be paid particular close attention to. I believe the highest gap does exist at eleventh grade. Um, lower, there are differentials in the earlier grades, but not to the degree, especially with ELA between 2017 and 2019. So yes, I would, I would, I, I would prefer if we could do this in person as soon as this is all lifted. Um, but if it has to be done before that, I, if it has to be done before that, we can look into that too. At least we could do maybe something under the video conference. But being that Dr. Bregy delivered the news that the CASP is, is suspended for this year, um, it does give us time to adequately plan to address this differentiation and downward trend. So I concur with Mr. Spitz, and I think we should address this. As soon as we clearly decked on these other issues, I think we should make this a priority. So, thank you. I'll, I'll pass it on.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Margot. Uh, Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yeah, um, I think it's, uh, definitely a relevant topic for conversation. Um, the only thing that troubles me, and there's nothing really we that can do about it at this point, but I know that, um, Mr. Schuman has talked quite, quite significantly about adjustments that have been made between last year and this year in terms of, um, what, what data we're using in order to, um, determine who goes into what class level. This is the first year that we're offering multiple levels of several different classes at the high school. So it's, uh, uh, sorry, at the middle school. So it's unfortunate that we don't get the opportunity to see the outcomes in the, in the state testing this year, because I think that would have actually shown how effective these changes have been. So, uh, you know, it's troubling, but I completely understand, you know, um, withdrawing the state testing because of the, the crisis. Um, I just don't know that we're going to be able to really have as robust of a conversation without that data. You know, we can talk about what has happened in, in years prior, but I, I don't think we're going to really be able to see the outcome of all of the things that already have been made yet. Um, so I just, we're talking about how to modify going forward, that we can take things with a little bit of a grain of salt, because there are a lot of changes that already have been implemented between last year's scores and what would have been this year's testing.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus?
A couple things. Um, well, first of all, um, I totally agree with Mr. Spitz about the fact that there's been a leveling off or not even any growth, and maybe in some cases decreases in some of the areas of math and language arts in the, in especially at the high school where it was more depth. Uh, I'm hoping that when the strategic plan is worked on, that they will try to address some of that also in terms of where we see the need of improvement, because that would probably be able to do something. And perhaps the strategic plan can do something with that in terms of developing, uh, programs that might be changed. Uh, I agree with, uh, Mrs. Walker Schuman about the fact that we're not having the CASP test this year, which is unfortunate, because I thought that would be giving us a chance to evaluate the new math and English Language Arts programs that were happening at the middle school. So maybe when we get to give them next year, that will really show us how-
Hello?
I don't hear her either.
Looks like we lost her. Can anybody hear?
Can you hear me now? I lost everyone there momentarily, and then I think you're, I'm back on. Hello?
I'm here.
I can hear you. So we can hear Mrs. Marcus.
You cannot hear Mrs. Marcus? I heard Mrs. Marcus.
Right.
Comments?
She dropped out. I think she dropped out for the rest of us.
Okay, I see what happened. Okay, so someone should send her an email to call back. Um, so a few thoughts just after hearing Mrs. Marcus's comments and hearing the five, the four of you. Um, even if we, Mrs. Walker Schuman, I'd just like to respond. Even if we did have the assessments done this year for the CASP scores, we wouldn't really be even begin to evaluate those until maybe October of next year, once school resumes and, you know, we get those over the summer. And then it takes staff a few days to start the year. And by the time it comes to the board, it's always been around October. So, I think I understand very clearly what Dr., what Mr. Spitz is talking about. He's talking about the trajectory of what the results have been for the last three years, including this current year right now. So, I think it's a good idea. I would love nothing more but to hear directly from the principals and, you know, even perhaps the, the chairs of those particular departments in the high school to see, you know, what their, what their insight is, you know, what their take is on this. I think that would be valuable information. Um, and in addition to, you know, understanding what Mrs. Marcus just said about the CASP scores not being there, and Mrs. Walker Schuman, you also said the same thing. Um, I would ask Dustin if there is a way to get the assessments, the, the local assessments that we do for, for each grade in the areas of math and English, uh, the benchmarks, I think is what you call them, um, that the site plans review, or that information is given to the site plans to review at the beginning of the school year. I, I understand that those assessments are being done periodically. It's not something we start at the, you know, start with or end with at the end of the year. It's something that happens throughout the year. So, how do those trends look? How have they looked at, you know, how have they been looking, um, in the last three years? And do they correlate with the CASP scores? I'd like to know that information. I'm not sure we, we see that or we capture that. Um, so Dustin, you can respond to that in a little bit. And finally, just to, I, I, just to reiterate what Mrs. Marcus said, I think the timing of all of this is really, um, an opportune time being that we are developing this, um, strategic plan for the district. And so if we could be part of, or if we can, we can analyze this information and, and, uh, conclude some very specific determinations about what we want to do or not do again, I think it's, it's, it's a great opportunity for us to do so now. So Dustin, I'm going to defer to you to see what you have to say about those, um, benchmark assessments that we take throughout the district for the different grades.
Hi, everyone. Dustin Schuman here. Thank, thank you guys for giving me the opportunity, opportunity to weigh in on this. Um, and thank you, Mr. Spitz, for actually bringing this up for discussion. Um, what I do want to draw all of our attention to is, uh, two years ago, we had a open discussion around, um, our focus at the high school curricularly and structurally shifting from not focusing specifically on the CASP exam, but focusing on the SAT. To see and to ensure that our students were getting into better and, uh, more elite post-secondary options, we wanted to start gearing our math and ELA instruction more towards the SAT, PSAT ten and PSAT nine versus focusing on the state standards of CASP and around the common core. So that's one of the things that we need to consider in this conversation, is that a lot of our ELA math, uh, science and social studies teachers have been focusing on working towards not only advanced placement, but the SAT primarily. Um, to answer some of the questions that, um, Mr. Hacker, uh, President Hacker had brought up, uh, the benchmark assessments are the ones that we have to, um, I'm going to say file in line for, due to the fact that we receive Title I in some, um, ELD, so Title III state or, uh, federal funding. When we receive federal funding, we have to utilize, which we utilize the Renaissance STAR 360 exam. And we have to assess our students, our, our special population five times over the year, and then our general education students three times a year, to ensure that we're not creating equity or educational gaps between our general ed students and our special populations. Those assessments do not align with the CASP. They're not common core aligned necessarily. They are something that the federal government requires us. I could bring those data sets back to us, but what it proves is that we aren't creating educational gaps between our ELD students and our general education students, that our EL students are progressing in a proper manner through the grades of third through eighth grade. We do not test, uh, utilize this exam in the high school. But I do agree with Mrs. Marcus. I think that this is, we have been living under a, a LCAP that was written in 2017, that the strategic plan and the new LCAP, which will be submitted, it might be pushed back. Um, see, California Department of Education, I sat on a meeting actually today at 3:00 PM, and they are all advocating for us to push back the LCAP submission till the fall due to the situation in which we are all currently in. However, this is a exact conversation that we need to have to write that LCAP in the strategic plan to ensure that our programs are supporting an increase in state testing, are supporting an increase in SAT. So I'm on board with all of this. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Spitz, or Mr. Margot, anybody have any questions based on what Mr. Schuman just said?
No, I don't. I, I would, uh, wait and see how this plays out.
Yeah, can I make a recommendation maybe? Is that, is that okay with everybody? Um, could, could, could we, our next strategic planning meeting, and we are going to ho- hold it virtually with the strategic planning district team on April sixth. Can I bring this recommendation back to that team? And then bring, uh, uh, a timeline and a recommendation back to the board for the April, I think, fourteenth meeting?
Well, I, I just have, that's, you know, I'm fine with that. I just do have a question about the CASP scores that still, I think, hasn't been answered. And that is, you know, I realize what you're saying about the SAT. But, yeah, I do know that we've made a more concerted effort to have students take the PSAT more than once and the SAT, and that we're providing resources for that to happen as a board. But I wouldn't say that, you know, we're, we're, we're offering classes or, or, you know, any, uh, how would I say, workshops for students to attend through the district so that there's improvement in the areas of the SAT or the PSAT. I, I would say that that, I don't want people to misconstrue what you've said to be the case, because that's not the case, clearly. Um, as a parent of, of two students in the high school, I can say that it's pretty much on, you know, you, you, you hopefully have your students take the cla- that, you know, we should be supporting our students to take those oppo- those tests and have those oppor- that are offered through the school district as opportunities for them to retake the test and to improve their scores. But ultimately, if all, uh, the duty and responsibility for them, um, to be, make, uh, um, a better score for themselves falls on them, right? And it's extra and above what they are doing, um, as students aside from the high school. You know, they, they have to do this on their own time. And I think Mr. Recupero can probably agree with me, just sitting at the di- or, you know, he's not sitting at the dais, but he's listening to this conversation. Um, but still, I think we, we have to, as a, as a board, um, you know, even if we were going to take the high school out of this conversation, I think we still need to look at what happens, uh, for the rest of the school, the rest of the, uh, school population, right? So, um, I still would welcome the opportunity that Mr. Spitz, uh, pitched to us that we have. And that would be to have a study session so that we can really look at this at its core and make, it just, if anything, analyze and assess what we're doing right and what we're not doing a hundred percent, and where we can improve. Um, we haven't had this discussion looking at three years. Um, and I leave it to the rest of the board if anybody else wants to chime in.
So, this is Dr. Bregy. I just want to say that- I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to say really quickly, this is, um, Dr. Bregy. I, I, I definitely think that the conversation will be a good one. I want to agree with what has been previously said. Um, you know, these are really important conversations, but they're also sensitive conversations. And I think that this is the type of conversation, it's been mentioned before, Mr. Spitz brought it up as well. Like, I, I, I'm hoping that this is a conversation we can have in person. Because if we're going to be bringing in department heads and we're going to be having a conversation with, um, you know, some of our staff that you haven't met before, it, it would be, I think, an ideal opportunity to have a face-to-face, to have a conversation about, um, especially, it's not just looking and reviewing the data, but it's also, you know, developing changes for the following year. So I would just, I just want to chime in that I, I also think it's a great idea. I just want to make sure, if, if possible, like, the, the physical set- I just want to make sure if possible, like, that the physical setting is not like this. I'm hoping this doesn't have to continue for very much longer because you lose the sense of, you know, collaboration without the eye contact. And I just think that this is so important that I just don't want it to be a remote experience.
I absolutely agree with that, Dr. Brighi.
And just to add on, I think this is a reasonable and relevant conversation. I just really want to make sure that we keep in mind that we're going to be missing a really critical data set. So, you know, while we have the discussions about where the gaps have been determined in the past, there's just no way we can have, we have a metric that can actually, you know, show the improvement from 18, 19 school year to our present school year. And there was a lot of work that was done, you know, between then and now to really shore up the areas of weakness. So as long as that's all part of the conversation, I don't want to end up overshooting, you know, well, we've made these changes, but we can't measure them. I don't want to end up making more changes thinking we're, you know, aiming for a particular outcome and then we, you know, fall short because we never actually got the numbers from this year's success.
Excuse me, am I on? Yes, Mrs. Marcus, your turn.
No, I just wanted to know if I was on because I tried to, I don't know what happened a few minutes ago, but I've been listening to the comments and I just wanted everybody to know that I did hear them. And I, although I didn't finish with what I was saying before, I'm sure that everybody has probably chimed in on what I was saying. So I just wanted to check to make sure.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm not sure we agree, I'm not sure that direction is clear at this point with what we're doing with this. I mean, I do understand this is Walker Schuman's point, however, I'm not saying, I don't think any, I don't think the intent of this is to, I think it's more of an assessment for the board to check in and to see, you know, what has happened the last three years. And then we can ask what things we did this year to maybe address some of these issues. But we haven't had that conversation. So the solution might...
That's totally reasonable.
The solution might already be in the recipe of what we've done, but I think we have to ask the question, right? So...
That's okay. I agree.
I defer to Mr. Spitz since he brought up the issue. Mr. Spitz, what are we, what would you like to see happen? And do we have direction from three or more board members?
Well, I agree with all the comments that have been made, but I do not think that we can just discount a three-year trend in CAS scores that has been so consistent. I think it bears looking into. Now, when we do have that opportunity to speak to department heads and get their input and the administrators' input, it may be, it may be that we, the board will be convinced that the problems have been resolved. But I, we need to hear it. We need to hear it. And so I agree that, I agree that this event should not be virtual. I agree that it should be in person and I'm looking forward to it.
It sounds like there is agreement, right? I think we're all saying the same thing, really.
Okay, so Dr. Brighi, I think as soon as we can, you know, we'll make this happen with a study session.
Yep, I think it's very clear.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Okay, so moving on to 12C, declining enrollment. Mr. Spitz?
Um, let's see, where are we here?
Declining enrollment?
I beg your pardon?
We are under declining enrollment, under communication from board members.
Okay, I had asked, I had asked also for this discussion. And the reason for it is that for a long period of time, I would say at least a couple of years, probably longer, I have been asking for the board and the staff to obtain information from those families who are taking their, who have taken their students out of the district. We know that there are some. We don't, we don't know, as far as the board, we, there's a lot that we don't know. We don't know, for example, how many students by each grade level have left the district in each of the past two years. And we don't know why. And I just think that that's a major issue. And so I've been kind of disappointed in that, in that we just haven't had any of that information. And I'd like to see it conducted as soon as possible. I think Dr. Brighi has said that they are, staff is working on this. I would like, at first, I'd like the board to see a list of the students by grade level who've left the district in each of the past two years. Because I think that that would give us some ideas, would disclose some information. And then what I would like to do is have a meeting with a private polling company to develop and send a simple poll to those families that have exited requesting their reasons for leaving the district. And because the responses might reveal patterns that would warrant modifications of our policies and procedures. That's it.
Okay, Mr. Margot, thank you for that. Mr. Spitz, Mr. Margot?
Yeah, I'm looking at what Dr. Brighi sent and he did, there was, I don't know what staff did this, what part of the staff, but they did break down by grade level, a total of, on this one is 11, and about 20 kids and the reasons they left.
That was from my department, Mr. Margot. That's from the intent to return forms that families filled out this past year so that we are planning for staffing in enrollment for the 2021 year.
Okay. So based on, based on the declining enrollment form that I'm looking at, the majority of the reasons, it looks like 99% of the reasons are people moving out of the country, of the city or the state. So I, I think what we have to find out, what I'm more interested in is why people choose their, choose to go a different route and stay in the city. Those that are in Beverly Hills that are not putting their kids into our schools, I think that would be a question that we'd want answered. My other thing is, you know, we have less kids in the district overall, because they're not moving too much. So I don't think that's a mystery, but we'll see what happens after this pandemic and how things level out, perhaps with affordability and all that stuff. But I'll listen, I'll listen to my other colleagues for a minute. Go ahead.
Can I respond real quickly to that one, to one segment? This is Laura. Moving to another district, also going to private school was one of the options. That information just either was not provided or they, or they're not going. We actually had a drop-down menu of all of the local private schools that they could also let us know which private school they were going to. So this is the information that was collected from everyone who filled out that form, over 2,000 responses.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Walker Schuman?
I think it's reasonable to look at the different reasons. We have talked about this before. If most of the reasons that are being given are that people are moving, then I don't know that we really have much, you know, control over that. But certainly worth continuing a discussion about enrollment. And I definitely think that, you know, having this type of opportunity to survey or answer questions is a good thing for students that are exiting the district, one of those that are choosing not to come back. It captures all the different grade levels, which is great. So yeah, I think, I think feedback is important and we should solicit it whenever we can.
Thank you. Mrs. Marcus?
I want to ask Mrs. Chisholm a question. Mrs. Chisholm, you just said the word 2,000. 2,000 responses? What are you referring to? The number of people coming back next year where they fill out the form before the end of the year? Are you referring to 2,000 students that are coming back that have filled out the form?
That's correct, Mrs. Marcus. This is, this is, this year we collected the information electronically through Google Forms. It used to be a paper form that went home. We changed it and made it electronic this year and we captured all the responses from the families in that manner. So yes, it is the intent to return form that I was referencing.
Okay, out of those 2,000, how many did you actually, how many students would have gotten out of that two, how many out of, 2,000 out of how many?
I said, I said over 2,000. I'm going to look and see if I can get the exact number of responses here. I have to go back into the document. But it went to every family in the district to find out.
Does that represent 2,000 students or because our total enrollment is about, what, 3,300?
Right, but not everybody chose to respond.
That's what I'm asking. So you don't have a full response of everybody?
I can tell, I will have to look up the complete number, but at the last checking before we went to spring break and before everything happened, we had over 2,000 responses. Yes.
Okay, and out of those 2,000, how many indicated they would not be returning?
22.
How many? I'm sorry, how many?
22, 22.
Oh, 20, 22.
22, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and most of those were because they were moving out of the city, the state or wherever?
Most of them say to another state. There are a few that say another district. They didn't choose to share what district, but the majority are moving to another state.
So that, none of them actually said a private school or another private school, which locally?
Um...
I'm just, I'm just asking, I just want to know how many of these might have opted to go to a private school, Harvard, Westlake, whatever?
That's what I was referencing earlier. We did also have that as one of the drop-down menu options. If you said they were going to another school, we asked what, if it was private or public, and we listed the op, we gave them opportunity to name the private school they were going to.
Oh, but you don't have that. Okay, I understand. I just, you know, I just...
It wasn't provided, that's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that. I would like to look a little more on the brighter, on the other side of the token of this. We are also getting students who come back to us or who are coming back. Do we do anything about trying to look at their reasons for coming back and so on? Especially with, you know, when we did the middle school, we had a tremendous influx of students. So I wonder if we ever look at why people come back and what we might be doing that they like what we're doing. That's just a positive thought of the whole thing. But I live on the street, there are no, the only kids on the block, there are no students in the Beverly Hills school. There are some children on the block and they are all in parochial, they're all at Jewish day school. So I mean, that is about the biggest factor we see is that many of the kids go to the parochial or the religious day schools, you know, the full-time day school. And I just wanted to mention that. But I am concerned about the reasons for the kids leaving as Mr. Spitz is, and I look forward to maybe looking into that with, with the faculty and the administration. I think it's a very interesting thing.
Okay, I have one update for the board. I was able to get into the document remotely. As of March 23rd, we had 2,658 responses.
Ooh, that's good.
And of those 2,658, only 22 students indicated that they would not be returning based on the information that we requested.
Okay, I appreciate that. That's very good. That's not, I mean, there's still another four or 500 students that have not, you know, returned a response, obviously, but that's still pretty good.
And we can follow up with them again. We did send it out multiple times with reminders and it was on the website. But we can continue to try to request that they fill this out along with the information or the suggestions that Mr. Spitz suggested as long, if that's the board's direction.
Okay, thank you for the information, Mrs. Chisholm.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so, you know, I do understand what everyone has said or, you know, all the comments that everyone has added to this discussion and so they're all well-taken. I do, I do have a particular, maybe different approach because we have had this conversation in the past and we have been getting information. I think one of the things that we have asked for, from my recollection as a board, has been that we are interested in finding out, you know, why students who live here, as Mr. Margot said, who live in the city, choose not to come to our district or at some point did come to our district and left for private school, most likely. So I wonder, we, we've had this discussion about having focus groups and asking the question, you know, what led to that decision? What was the game changer for some of these families? And I believe other board members before this board have also had a similar discussion in the past. So maybe that's the way to go with this information as opposed to having another study session on this because then I think it would be critical at that point to have a study session to, you know, really assess the findings of those focus groups if we chose to have some. And I think that the timing, again, is so, is so good for us at this moment in time because we are putting a strategic plan together, we are analyzing academic, you know, outcomes in this district and performance. And, you know, we're asking the question, what else can we do to make the system better? And I think it's, it falls under our purview. I think it's part of our responsibility as board members in that. Rather than, again, entertaining the board and staff with another study session with information, I think we best, have best use of time and resources if we were to have one or two focus groups dedicated to families who have left the district or who have told us this time around, the 42 families, if I heard Mrs. Chisholm, who are choosing not to come. So really extrapolating from that and from, how many?
22, 22.
22, I'm sorry, 22. I think that's the way to look at this. And also by that same token, like Mrs. Marcus said, what, what families did we pick up this year? And to ask them, why did you choose to come back to Beverly Hills? I think that's a fair question both ways.
And I can, I can work with my staff to create those lists for you and we keep all, we do keep all of that data and we can, we can run it from ARI. If I may, I'd like to make a suggestion. I think it's a twofold process. I think, I think we have to really look before reconfiguration and after reconfiguration because just having been here the year and a half before and now about a year after, I can tell you that our enrollment trends are going up as far as our middle school. But I think Mr. Spitz has a good point as to why did they leave before? And I think that's data that we can capture or that we can, that we can find. And as long as that's the board's direction and Dr. Brighi approves it, I would be willing to look into that and do the work and at least present the information to the board and we figure out what to do with it afterwards or do with it from there. But also looking at our people, our students who are not enrolling in our schools and finding out why. Now, these 22 did tell us why they're moving. They're, they're leaving the state, they're leaving the country, so they're no longer in Beverly Hills. But the parents who are opting to send their students and their children to a private school, I do think that's a good point, Mrs. Hacker, to have a conversation as to why or what led to those choices and if there's anything that we can do to attract them.
Okay, so Dr. Brighi, and I want to ask you, are you clear on what we're doing next or what are you proposing for the board to do? Where do we go from this discussion?
Well, I would like to take some time to look at what data is available because to form a focus group, I just want to make sure that, you know, we, that we have enough people to pull together. Oftentimes when people leave, they, they're really, and many times we don't know that they've left until after they've left, so to get them to come back is really difficult. And sometimes when people come back into the district from a private school, we don't, we don't always know that information. I think we've got better data now than what we've ever had before. So I would like to meet with... So, um, I would like to meet with, um, Ms. Chisholm's department just to find out like what, what data can we find out? And then let's present that back to the board as far as, um, you know, next steps for a focus group or, um, you know, having a, you know, a, a poll that, that gets down to, you know, more detail than just what are you leaving, but why are you leaving? But even somebody moving out of the country, it might be interesting to know, um, you know, if, what their experience is like here.
I wonder if it wouldn't be worthwhile to discuss with the city, sending out a survey that really would target residents whose students are in private school to have them ask, answer these questions, you know? And I mean, to write a survey that the city, if they would agree to, to, you know, share it, um, with the community members that are residents who have kids in private school, why did they choose that path, you know? And, and to try to maybe inform that decision-making process a little bit better. We have such a rich, uh, resource in, in this city of, of families that can help inform how these decisions are made and what our considerations ought to be.
How do you, how do you, how do you identify the, all the families who reside in Beverly Hills but have kids in other schools? How do you identify them?
Well, I mean, I think if we sent out a survey and we asked, do you have school-aged children? If they're not, if they don't attend Beverly Hills Unified, where do they attend? And, and just kinda go from there. Not everyone is gonna participate, but it'll certainly give us a lot more feedback than just a handful of people in a room.
Well, that, that would be a good thing to do if you wanna survey every family in Beverly Hills. Uh, that, I'd, I'd say, I'd be in favor of that. One thing that I wonder about is, we've got about thirty-three hundred kids enrolled now. And if I understood correctly, you've heard from about twenty-seven hundred kids out of th- thirty-three hundred. Is that, so that means that you have not heard from as many as about six hundred kids. Um, I think that, that's an interesting issue. Um, and, uh, you know, it may be that, uh, that while there were only twenty-two kids leaving, indicating they were leaving from the twenty-seven hundred responses, it could be that, uh, a much greater number, uh, percentage might, uh, might, uh, be leaving from the six hundred who haven't responded.
Yes, I would agree with that point. And then I realize that some of those six hundred responses that didn't res, six hundred students who didn't respond or so might be also graduating, just like Mr. Recupero. But even then, we would still have about three hundred students who are not graduating. So, what's, you know, I'd, I'd be interested in finding out why they didn't respond.
Many people are also undecided.
Well, that's, that's why I think it's important to, to have a, a focus group. I think the, and it, and it can't be us having the focus group. It has to be a third party. Uh, and there's companies that do that and they're very effective at what they do. They exactly, know exactly what to do, and then we have the data. And, um, I don't think that Beverly Hills Unified has ever done anything like that. I think we should do something like that at some point.
Can, can I also add something, Mrs. Dustin?
Yes, Dustin.
Um, one of the things that I do, Mr. Spitz, is through Title I and through Title III. What Title I is for low socioeconomic families and Title III is for E, English learner. And I have to receive data from our three, um, Page Academy International Schools, um, Harkam Halal and Good Shepherd. The, um, names of the students that would qualify because we have to split our funding with them. So, we have had to approve like catapult learning for them. I could ask and work with Laura's department on creating a survey to see if those schools would share that survey with those students.
Yeah, that would be, that would be, that would be a good, um, venue to tackle. Yeah.
I will work with Laura on that.
That would be a good starting point.
Yep.
That's, that's a good starting point, but you have to remember that there's Sinai Temple and there's, uh, Stephen S. Wise, uh, which have day schools which capture a lot of our students in Beverly Hills.
And Crossroads.
And Crossroads and Harvard Westlake and Bruntwood and there, there are many.
So, those are, yeah, I'd say the elementary grades, mostly the elementary on that, um, because they are, that's where most of the kids in my neighborhood, the ones in my neighborhood, they're, they're kids that are in the lower grades.
Yeah, those, we would have to work on either a focus group, the ones that we have accessed through due to Title I and Title III are Page Academy International, Harkam Halal and Good Shepherd.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to also remind the board of one important point. Um, I think when we were talking about the number of total responses we received from the, um, intent to return, uh, there was a comment that we have about thirty-five hundred districts in the, students in the district. But I'd like to remind you that approximately four hundred of those don't count because they're seniors. So, we would need to, we would need to knock that number down to about thirty-one hundred. So, we're pretty close. We, we got twenty-six fifty-eight out of about thirty-one hundred.
Wait, how many, I'm sorry, Mrs. Chisholm, how many seniors did you say we have?
About four hundred. I don't have the exact number.
Oh, oh, I thought you said twelve hundred. I thought, wow.
No, 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 four, four.
No, yeah, that's what I, I made those comments. Yes, I, I agree with you. I, I made those comments. I, I actually used the number three hundred and something. I didn't say four hundred. But yes, I concur and I, yeah, I corrected that with Mr. Spitz.
Thank you. My, my call dropped, so I might have missed that when you said that.
That's, I know, the meeting's getting a little long. Okay, so, uh, board, I'm talking to the board. This is our meeting. This is our agenda item. Are we, are we in consen, do we have consensus as to what we're doing with this item? What direction do you wanna give, uh, the staff? I think we want data points of whatever information they have. Dustin has volunteered to get some information from, I'm sorry, Halal Academy, did you say, and Page, and there was one other. But aside from that, I...
Harkam Halal.
Halal, okay, and, and...
Good Shepherd.
And Good Shepherd. But besides that, I think Mrs. Marcus's point is well-taken. I, I love the idea of maybe surveying, uh, with the city if they were able to be partners with us in this endeavor. Uh, but I still think, um, to satisfy the request that came initially from Mr. Spitz, at some point the board has to, you know, really assess this information and take it to the next level, which might include, and I'd like the board to not make any decisions on this now, but definitely entertain the fact that we might have to have a, um, a focus group of some sort at some point with a small group of people, which would be very telling. That's why you do focus groups to begin with. Is that, is that satisfactory to you, Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mr. Margot?
I was gonna say that, that I like the idea of accessing data that's easy to get to if, if, uh, uh, Dr. Chisholm or Dustin have information that they can compile quickly for us to then further look at the issue. That's great. I don't wanna give direction for staff to do really anything right at this moment except focus on that home learning, the remote learning. I think that's paramount to me to make sure we get this right. So, I would, I, I think this information is important to have, but I would only feel comfortable directing staff to get more involved if we have the home learning thing down pat. I don't think we're there yet.
Well, I sure agree with that.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that, too.
Mrs. Marcus?
Ditto.
Okay, so maybe this is homework for us to tackle over the summer and it could very well be done. Okay? Does that, does that sound fair?
Yeah, sounds fair, yes.
Okay, great. All right, so in the meantime, um, just for staff, just to clarify and circle back, um, whatever information you have at your, um, that is easily accessible, if you could, you know, at some point put that together. There's no urgency. We plan to continue this very aggressively in the summer, I think. So, um, we're gonna move on. Uh, professional development, we're gonna move on to professional development training calendar. Uh, again, this is a conversation that we've had in the past. Uh, I know that two years ago I brought up the notion that, you know, when we start to collectively get ready to approve budget, a budget for the year, uh, you know, we have these study sessions, which I know we already have one planned for April. Um, I think one part that has been missing in this adoption of the budget has been having a clear snapshot picture of professional development and training, a calendar, if you will. Um, not any, and I've said this many times before, it doesn't have to be anything set in stone, but it should be a picture, a general picture of what kind of training or, you know, of the what. And, you know, what, what are we looking at as far as dollars and concentrations? Where are we concentrating our efforts? Um, I think that would be very helpful for the board to see as we then adopt a budget that includes a line item under professional development and training. And then throughout the year, we constantly are approving, uh, POs and requisitions for professional development and training. And so, it's hard for us to, it's hard for me anyways, I don't wanna speak for anybody, but being on the board now for, for, for almost five years, it's hard for me to sometimes look back and say, okay, I, I kinda get the picture of what we approved and where those dollars went and what the macro picture was. So, I'd like for staff, I'd like for the board to give directions to the board to just, I mean, I'd like for the board to give direction to staff to, to kind of, you know, this is, this would be something new for our district, of course. And so, again, I wanna say we have some flexibility to have some parameters that are not met in stone. But just as a general snapshot, like if, if we were to have a, a calendar of some sort developed for us to see as we start to get ready to approve our budget, I think it would be very, very helpful. Um, so that's all I'm gonna say on that. I, if anybody wants to add anything, don't feel like you have to. Um, I think this is something that we can do now. I think time is right, um, and we can circle around the table. Noah?
Miss Hefner, can I, oh...
No, let, let Mr. Seaman, let Mr. Seaman go because I, I'm looking at his, uh, attachment so he can explain it so people who don't have it understand what, what he said out there to show.
Totally. So, so, uh, what I shared with you guys was, uh, we don't actually have an Ed Services of Professional Development budget. We are awarded Title II dollars, which are federal dollars provided for teacher growth, which is technically awarded to, to us by the percentage of teachers that we have. So, we currently have two hundred and seventy-three certificated staff members and we get a certain dollar amount, depending on that dollar amount that's set by the federal government, to provide support to them. Part of the strategic plan is...
I, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have that document. I'm not sure where it was sent to us.
Dr. Breggy sent us all a document.
It was in the package.
Okay, I'll look for it. I, okay.
It's toward the end, it's toward the end.
Yep, and so, so what, what we promised, and I can say this out loud, is part of the strategic plan is exactly that, is to be able to, uh, delineate the exact goals that we as a district want to work towards that will help support, obviously, the CAF scores, SAT scores. And then all professional development will be under that strategic plan. So, then you see precisely exactly where the dollars are being spent and why are we going in the direction exactly for the calendar, um, and the professional development we'll be providing under that strategic plan. It'll be very transparent to you when the strategic plan is presented, I promise.
Okay. Um, Mr. Margot?
No, I, I, I think Dustin explained it well. Uh, you know, it is, it is based in, in a Title II expenditure. It's nothing, I believe. I mean, we obviously can allocate it, but as, as long as it's presented to us upfront, like he's saying, it's, it's, uh, I think we're in the right direction. I think you calling for this item and, and staff kind of meeting you already halfway with some of this is, uh, will bode well. So, thank you.
Mr. Spitz?
I agree, I agree with, uh, with, uh, Mar, uh, Marco's comment.
Okay, Mrs. Walker Schuler?
Uh, yes, I agree with both comments. I just, I wanna make sure this also slides into the category of work we can do over the summer. I really don't want anything to get in the way of rolling out, uh, it, you know, optimized, uh, home learning.
Of course. Well, I just want, okay, um, I just wanna remind everybody, we have a study session planned for our approval of our budget. And, um, I wasn't talking, um, this is directed at Mr. Seaman. I, I was not at all, um, speaking of those areas that you spoke of. And I do appreciate that you're going to incorporate this to be part of our, uh, strategic plan. However, there is a correlation of some expenses that are associated with what the board is asked to approve at the time of, um, setting up our budget. And so, I was trying to get a, a picture of what, what that entails for the, for the year ahead, um, so that we can then reconcile that at the end and throughout the year. So, um, it's been a little challenging for me to see that big picture and though, and again, although I, I appreciate that it will be captured in the strategic plan, it won't be a snapshot picture of every year. And so, I, I, I think it's a healthy practice for a district to have. I've seen this adopted in other districts and just like they do their textbooks and other big ticket items. And it really, um, puts the ownership of good planning, um, and, and good foresight. And, and, and the board then feels like they can truly understand what this area, which is a big area and it should be a big area, entails and where, again, all of our efforts are being concentrated. So, I do appreciate and understand and applaud you as to where you're coming from in the strategic point, uh, strategic plan. But I think we need to at some point, this district should cross that line and, and make this effort. And so, it can be something we can work, um, you know, something that can be done in the summer. Uh, but there would have to be a placeholder and there will be as we adopt our, um, budget. So, that's all I'm gonna say, Ms. Marcus. I'm sorry, I just wanted to respond to some of the comments that have been made.
Well, you didn't give me a chance to make mine, but I, I would like to just make a couple of points which you did make very, very well. And that is that to know what the, uh, what professional development opportunities there are out there, to know which ones will be most valuable to our staff and to, and then giving equal opportunity for the teachers and the people that wanna go to them, that they have that opportunity so that they can take turns, so that everybody gets a chance to share in them. But more importantly also, it should be made aware that when people come back from these, uh, classes or these things that they go to, these developments, professional developments, that they must be ready to share and, uh, with the people who did not go, what they learned. Because as far as I'm concerned, there's no value to them unless they can spread the wealth once they get back. So, uh, I like that to be considered as something when we start to develop this, in the strategic plan about sharing what we learn at all these various events. Um, and, uh, as far as knowing what they are in, in advance, it gives us a chance to know how much money we have to allocate toward the budget so that we don't have to get, uh, be set with one coming up that we didn't plan on it and so on. And I think that that's very important. And I, I recall that last year from that, uh, one that they had sixteen or seventeen teachers go to in Philadelphia that I sort of took, uh, an exception to. That really bothered me. So, uh, I, I don't want that to happen and I want that to be on the record. That's it.
Okay, so I think at some point, something for staff to think about, I'm not sure, uh, again, we understand that we're under a, a very pressed timeline right now with what's going on around us and we don't want to get in the way. I, I hear that and I, I absolutely agree with that, with those statements from the board as it relates to all of these topics. But I think it is something, I think it's homework again for the summer, um, if we're really going to be serious about. And we are very serious, I wanna say. I just think we need to take it to the next level in making sure that these big ticket items in our, on our budget, when we're asked to approve, we have some, uh, background as to why we're being asked to approve these big ticket items. And then as things come forward throughout the year, we, uh, for approval, um, we can really balance things against what was the wish list and what actually is occurring. So, um, I think, I look forward to having this conversation, um, in the near future and, and finalizing with some plan, hopefully. Doesn't seem like we're ready to do that today. Um, anybody else want to add anything? Staff?
Dr. Breggy, I just wanna say, um, I, I mean, it's, it's clear what the board would like. And I think to provide this overview with some of the expectations that were outlined today is, is fair. Um, you know, this is the time of year where we're planning for next year. So, I think that that's a reasonable request. We just, you know, with, with what's going on, that, that does change things a little bit as far as our planning piece. But I think that we'll be able to come together, uh, because we are looking at next year in professional development. So, to start providing you with, you know, areas and topics of... So to start providing you with, you know, areas and topics of, um, you know, professional development, um, and, and potential costs that go with them. I mean, we could absolutely start working on that. I mean, it's, it's the kind of thing, it'll get better each year, but it is something that we can definitely start working on.
Thank you for that, Dr. Bregge. Okay, and the last item for board communication, uh, is this BHUSD team morale survey. So, um, I talked to Dr. Bregge about this, uh, I've been talking to him about it for some time now, and, you know, the whole purpose for having a survey, um, would be to just capture, you know, is, I'm sorry, I'm hearing like voices. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. I just hear like little voices every time I speak. Uh, so, again, the, the purpose, you know, and I wanted to kind of feel the temperature of the board, um, the whole purpose behind this is to really just find out from our teachers and from our parent community and maybe even if there's a way to incorporate, of course, students if, if that's not too much of an undertaking for, um, our staff, you know, just to find out before, just before we convene, you know, are we, you know, are we meeting the needs of these important stakeholders? And really, uh, identifying areas, for example, are we providing professional development? Is there a plan? Is there enough funding? Is it organized? Um, do students feel that we are attending to their needs, you know? Um, we can identify those areas that would be, um, specific to student needs and, and interests. And furthermore, of course, to incorporate our parent community, um, to have that back and forth and really, um, take the temperature of, of our stakeholders again to understand if, you know, we are doing all that we can do. And again, as we look at, to adopting the strategic plan, I feel that all of this comes, comes nicely together and aligns, um, to really set structure and, um, you know, parameters for our district to move forward in the next few years. So that's pretty much it. It's not a got to or, you know, to, it's, it's, I, it's intended to be productive. It's intended to be, um, productive for the board to understand if we are in sync with the needs and interests of all of our stakeholders. Um, so I'd like to defer to Mr. Margot and see if he has anything to add. And again, I just want to say, nothing to do, nothing that we would do tomorrow, something that would be done at the end of the school year or maybe even over the summer.
Can I also chime in?
Maybe we have, Mr. Recupero.
Yeah, I know, uh, Ms. Hacker, you brought up, uh, students and I think that in order for it to be productive, I think students, uh, should take the survey, should be involved in the survey, whether it's their, them just evaluating teachers or administrators or whatever, but I think an exit survey, um, for each student as they leave their, uh, respective classes would be really effective, especially to learn, the teachers can learn from these on what worked well and what didn't. Um, I mean, there's always room for improvement and I see that these exit surveys can provide this improvement, um, inside and outside, outside the classroom. So I think students should be, um, involved in these to be very productive.
Yes, absolutely. And, and again, just to preface that, I would like to say that, you know, maybe the exit survey would be done differently from, from that of parents and teachers. I'm not sure. Something that definitely you and, uh, Dr. Bregge and, you know, we can all talk about, um, to, to really maximize the opportunity to get the best information. But thank you for that, Mr. Recupero. Mr. Margot?
Awesome, thank you.
Um, I think, I think surveys like this, um, we have to be, the board has to be clear on what information we want. I, I, I think there's so many different directions and so much information you can collect from the different stakeholders, um, you know, if, if, you brought it up as a morale survey, so then you really have to, we really have to stay focused on those questions that answer that because this could go off in a million directions and I, that wouldn't be helpful to us, especially if we're trying to utilize the data, um, in graph form or whatever so we have a better understanding. So I think just, just as, as we move forward with this at some point, um, uh, and I'm always curious to hear what, what all the stakeholders think, um, we, we also have to understand, it's very subjective, um, people, people have different standards in what they expect out of their own students, what they expect, uh, both as parents and teachers, but also what, um, what they expect out of the schools. You know, people are, are using the school districts for different means. You know, certain kids are going through the do, school district with expectations to eventually wind up in an Ivy League college. Certain kids aren't going that route. So morale surveys from the, the same questions to, to those different sections, sections of kids are going to yield extremely different responses. So I just want, we need to know that going in, um, and I think as long as we know that and formulate the, the survey to accommodate those, the differentiation, um, we could have some information, we walk away with that's successful. So, thanks, that's it.
Mr. Spitz?
Well, um, I, I'm, I, I find the topic very interesting because, uh, I've, I have heard, uh, more or less rumors of, uh, low morale among, um, uh, high, uh, high school teachers and everything, but I, I think this, I think that the current condition that we have of, uh, of providing virtual delivery of the educational program, I, I think this would get in the way of any kind of, of, uh, of surveys or, or information gathering at the present time. I think we're going to, I, I think we're going to have to wait on this until conditions are normal.
Okay, thank you for that, Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Uh, that's, that's a really interesting point and one that's not lost on me. Um, I, I would tend to agree with you, Mr. Spitz, that the timing of, of asking for this type of feedback is really important. Um, that being said, as I've said many, many times, I'm a huge advocate of stakeholder feedback. So I think, um, you know, if we're, if we're talking about a survey that we could come up with in conjunction with, uh, you know, the city to reach out to resident students who are going to private school, you know, if we're doing all of this work in terms of survey takings, then maybe it would be worthwhile to talk to a company that does this professionally and make sure that the questions that we're asking will actually yield unbiased results and type of information that would really be helpful to us. Um, you know, again, not, not that the timing right now is correct. I think it ought to be probably later in the year, once we're through this home learning environment, um, you know, situation. Uh, but I think it would be great to get feedback from students and parents and teachers. Um, and I think, you know, to have someone help advise us to write these, these types of questions in a way that would yield the best possible, um, data would be tremendous. I would be a big supporter of that.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Marcus.
I agree with everything that everybody has said so far. It's, uh, a, really a very tricky thing. I too have heard about low morale at the high school. Uh, I, I think it, it, if you, it depends on what you really are trying to achieve in the, um, in the survey. And again, uh, you have to be so careful about the questions you ask and that using a professional. Um, and right now with the temperature of the district with what's going on, I don't think that this would be the time to do it at all. So everything that has been set up to now, I would thoroughly agree with and, uh, I would hold off because I think there's just too much going on right now.
Okay, well, that takes the temperature of the room. Again, I started off by saying that I would couch this by being some, an activity that would take place towards the end of the year or even over the summer. Um, but, you know, at some point, the board needs to start taking initiative with some of these issues, otherwise they will never get done. And, um, you know, of course, there's, there's, CSBA is notorious for having, I, I believe they have a good, a great resource of, of methods which, in which these, um, surveys can be conducted. I think the student survey would be, uh, slightly different for reasons that we've already stated and I believe, uh, all of you have, have agreed. Um, and, uh, you know, that's fine. It doesn't seem like we have a consensus right now to move forward with any, with this and giving any solid direction. So we will table it. So thank you for the opportunity to discuss this. I, I would, I would think that we have an opportunity to do so in the end of the school year or the summer. Um, if any of you have a, a change of heart, you know, let me know and I'd be happy to put it back on the agenda. But, um, I did my part. I put it on the agenda. I disagree that tabling it to no known time is not really, uh, going to give us any result of any kind. So that's fine. Okay, so, uh, see moving, if, if anybody else want any, before I end discussion, anyone that, have anything else to say on this item for discussion?
Uh, I would just like to add, Isabel, that I'm not opposed to doing a survey. I just feel that right now is-
I, I understand that and I, I hear that, Mrs. Marcus, but what I, I don't hear, I, what I'm not hearing from anybody is when do, when would you like to have the morale survey done, the professional development training calendar done, uh, declining, I mean, I'm not, if, if you, if everyone, listen to everyone around the, you know, around the discussion, we all agree that nothing should happen until we, um, deal with the situation. But in the absence of that, nothing, nothing concrete has been established and that's fine. But I, I, I disagree with that approach entirely and I want to go on record on that.
Well, the professional development we're doing during, they're going to be doing that when they do the str- the strategic plan and including it in the budget, will we include it in the budget. So there will be some, something to, to, to chat.
It's always included in the budget. We just never have a big snapshot picture of what it is we're approving with that dollar amount. There's nothing behind that dollar amount. That's the point of all this.
Oh, I, I understand that. I agree with you.
And, and-
So, Ms. Hacker, Ms. Hacker?
Strategic plan is not deep enough, the strategic plan is not deep enough because it will not give an opportunity for the district, for, for the board going forward to have, uh, you know, good practice, better practice, if you will, um, in approving a dollar assigned, assigned to that category. It's just a, it's just a cat, it's just a, a, a-
I understand.
The amount it's associated, associated is just a, a filler for, for a space, but it ju, it tells us nothing about what we're about to approve in future months ahead in the fiscal year. So that's called accountability and I'd like for us to have some of that. I haven't, so again, I want to go on record that I tried to put this together and I am not saying at all to be disruptive in the next few weeks. I'm saying, please take an opportunity to do something about this and put some teeth behind this as you're going to be able to approve this budget in the next few weeks. You know, let's, let's, let's go all out. Let's, let's do something about this. For two years I've been saying this and nothing has happened. Nothing is going to continue to happen as long as we pass the buck and we say, oh, not this time, maybe next year.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. I appreciate your input though.
Mrs. Hacker, I was going to say that I think what we could do is shoot for, if you want to put a, a date on this, then we should have this information prior to approving the twenty, twenty twenty-one budget.
Right.
So like you brought up. So that gives us the timeframe and, and I would agree with that. I think this is something that, that you could, and this gives staff time and it, and it gives you the, the transparency and accountability you're looking for and it doesn't ha, it doesn't have to be done in the next, you know, four or five weeks. It could be done after things settle down in May as they're, you know, uh, those departments are getting ready to, to work on more stuff. Now, if it can get done earlier, great, but I think if you-
I agree.
-just make it part of, if you say, look, I'm not going to really approve the twenty twenty-one budget unless I see these things spelled out a little clearer. That's fine. That, 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 that's perfectly sensible.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. I agree with that approach entirely. Okay, so, um, is staff clear? Um, I think we have consensus from at least three board members on this morale survey at some point, you know, to be done going forward, the cali, I'm sorry, for the calendar. Um, I think we already talked about that and I look forward again to bringing this up in the near future. Um, and, you know, we understand the timeline and constraints of the current period that you're under with this homeschooling and, um, we won't do anything until this period is past us. Um, but we'll, we'll bring it up again. Does that sound fair?
It sure does.
It sounds like there's complete consensus, actually.
Yeah, I mean-
Okay, great.
This is, this is Dr. Bregge. I think that what, as far as the, the, talking about the, the budget and staff development, as, as we're putting that together, uh, because that will take some time, that's something that we can just share with the board so that, um, you know, that we're capturing what we all think should be captured in it so that you can see that we're creating it, um, so that it's, it's not just something that's just, you know, we create some sort of document for you. Do we bring you along the way so that, um, just, I, we do realize this has been asked for, um, but as we're building the PD for next year, uh, that will include you and the plans, uh, for everything from costs to, um, grade levels and, um, how many people will be attending, we can absolutely start putting something together and create that.
Yeah, and I don't think we need the most, I, I, I just think we need macro, you know, visual of what you're all trying to accomplish, under what area. And I think the principals are, are key in this conversation. I think they know their school better and I think they can, they can really, um, be helpful in giving us some of this information.
Hundred percent.
And again, not now, after all this has passed. So I really want to make that clear to staff because I know you're under a lot of pressure.
I, I totally agree. Totally agree with that and I think that that's something we can work on.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, are there any other comments from board members as we close, uh, the meeting? Mr. Recupero?
Oh, I just have one more thing, just discussing like the high school morale. I think a lot has to do with it that the main building and the auditorium and the salter theater and many venues where students would gather together are not available for use. Um, I think that in the future, when those are open, that the morale will improve, but I think it's still a changing issue at the moment. That's just my comment on the high school morale, but.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, Mr. Margot, any concluding comments on, on, just board comments in general?
No, good point, Mr. Recupero. Thank you for adding that to the conversation. Um, no, I, I have nothing else to add tonight. Thank you, uh, Mrs. Hacker for leading a difficult, uh, meeting under these circumstances and getting the business of the board done.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Mr. Spitz?
Well, ditto, uh, on leading, uh, the meeting. This, uh, has been, uh, not only, it, it's been unique and, uh, and I, and I think it's been done well and, uh, I just, uh, hope everybody stays safe.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. This is Walker Schuman.
Yes, I concur and, as I said last meeting, I think that it's no small feat that so many of our votes are five oh. So I think that it's, it's a lot of good work and, you know, we soldier on during a crazy crisis time. Yep.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Uh, Mrs. Marcus?
I want to thank you for leading a very, very productive meeting. I think we accomplished a lot, though it may not seem like it at the moment right now, but I think we did air out a lot of things that you've had on your mind and that we've had on our minds. And I think this is not the end of the discussions. I think they would continue and I just hope that everybody stays safe and that we can come through this and that the parents and the students will be able to further their education completely in the next few weeks.
I actually do, um, want to say thank you to the four of you. I know that, and to the staff. I know that this has been a challenging time for all of us with a lot of questions and, um, and we welcome the challenge, of course, and, uh, we just, uh, you know, I'm really proud of the board meeting today and of all the work the staff has done. I know that you've done a lot behind the scenes over the break and, um, I truly appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. I do want to say something to, I do have a, a statement for the community. Um, today was the first day back from spring break and also the first day with home learning instruction. I'm convinced that every stakeholder at BHUSD realizes how quickly the daily routine of our lives has changed significantly in a matter of days and how we all have had to adjust to multiple changes. In thinking of tonight's board meeting, I thought it would be so appropriate to share a collage of brief excerpts from multiple teachers across the district and their communication with students and parents. These quotes encapsulate the essence and mood that is alive throughout BHUSD during these moments of great uncertainty, but they also provide opportunity for all of us to reflect, to be a little bit more patient, to learn and to grow together. Mrs. Garrett from Horseman School, second grade teacher, quote, "I am mindful that we are in a new era, that we are facing unexpected challenges in our personal, home, social, work, and economic lives. My goal is to continue your child education without placing burden, stress, or frustration on anyone," end of quote. Mrs. Timmerman, Hawthorne School, fourth grade teacher. If you had any questions whatsoever, please let me know. I will continue to send a brief note to you every Monday and as usual, to let you know what we are learning. And of course, you are welcome to look at your kid over their shoulders and take a peek at their assignments," end of quote. And she concludes by saying, "I'm sad of, about this unfortunate turn of events, but we will make the best of it and hopefully return to school before the-" but we will make the best of it and hopefully return to school before the end of the year. Keep safe, Mrs. Timmerman." Mr. Glass, math teacher from Beverly Hills High School, quote, "This new process of virtual learning will be an adjustment for all of us. But I want to emphasize that we are all in this together, and the key of getting through this will be communication and patience. Throughout this period, please know that I'm here for you, not just academically, but for anything you need or want to talk about going on outside of the classroom," end of quote. Mr. Yu, calculus teacher at Beverly Hills High School, "The new process of virtual learning will be an adjustment for all of us. But I want to emphasize that we are all in this together, and the key to getting through this will be patience, proactivity, and an open mind. I'm sitting in this roller coaster along with you. Let's make the best of it." Mr. Briggs, photography at Beverly Hills High School, "I want to assure you that your teachers, administrators, and school staff are doing all that they can to ensure that your quality education continues and that you have every opportunity to succeed and to achieve your goals. In closing, I believe that through patience, effort, unity, and faith, the human spirit has ultimately triumphed. We will make it through this together. Stay safe, be smart, don't hesitate to isolate." Mr. Van Rossen, history teacher at Beverly Hills High School, "I hope this email finds you well and that you are adjusting as best as you can to these very unusual times. I wanted to let you know that Beverly Hills High School teaching staff is dedicated to continuing instruction as best as we can." He continues by ending his email, "Things have been a bit rocky over the next few days as we learn and adapt, but I am confident that before long we will become very comfortable with this new format," end of quote. And finally, from our Spanish teacher, Mr. Isaac, quote, "I remember many of you explaining to me the medical term for COVID-19 and the philosophical and universal codes it carries. Whether it is true or not, you have no idea how much I appreciate you trusting me with your thoughts, conspiracy theories, and hidden messages the world sends to us. The conversations we had meant that you were and are thinking for yourselves, that you are becoming wise, that you are analyzing the word around you, the world around you, I'm sorry, and that it in itself is a blessing. I saw and heard you growing up, maturing, and being resilient at such young age. I admire you." And finally, in closing, I'd like to share a final paragraph from an email I recently received from an admired teacher and retired teacher educator, Mrs. Merle Bauer, who reminded me and others that in light of all that is happening around us today, we should remember and be inspired by Anne Frank's message. Quote, "Think of all the beauties still left around you and be happy. I don't think of all the misery, but of the beauty that still remains in nature, sun, freedom, and in yourself," end of quote. Thank you for tonight, be patient, stay safe, and positive, and good night. The meeting is now adjourned. We're done, right, everyone? Hello?